Okay. Those wishing to participate in that and the Pledge of Allegiance, would you please stand?
In the Bible, Paul wrote a letter to a young preacher named Timothy saying, "First of all, I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgivings be made for all people, for kings and all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. O gracious God, we do pray for this assembly today and ask that you pour out your wisdom and grace and blessing, so that these people would do just that for us, help us to lead peaceful, quiet, and dignified lives here in Penale County, that we might be good citizens and model people for the people of Arizona and for the world. We ask that you bless this meeting with a sense of your presence and peace, in Jesus' name. Amen."
Mr. Searcy, would you like to lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome to the Penale County Board of Supervisors, May 4th, our regular meeting. And also, for those Star Wars fans, may the 4th be with you. I had to say that. So, all right. I know a lot of you are here to, we're gonna have the call of the public, I know a lot of you are here to talk about the fire district issues. I'm going to rearrange the agenda a little bit and bring that item up to the forefront after the first, so I'm gonna have like kinda two calls to the public, I'm gonna switch it up a little bit. I've got one person here that would like to speak about election integrity, and that would be Mr. Saban. So, we'll open that up to Mr. Saban. And then, I'm going to, we'll have announcement and we'll do quick discussion after the consent items, after the consent agenda, then we will go to item, I believe it's 11. And we'll have the public speak to that item, if that's okay with everybody here, and that'll get you out of the meeting quicker, so you don't have to sit here forever and ever. I see, I see heads nodding, but that's a good idea. Okay, so, Mr. Saban, you're up. And generally where you live, et cetera.
Yeah, so, hi, Pete Saban, Unincorporated Marana. And, good morning, Chairman McClure, Supervisors. So, I've spoken about this once before, and I just wanted to go back to it. 2,000 Mules, which is Dinese de Souza's documentary, is out this week. It's in theaters, it's been selling out pretty much everywhere. What it is, is it's working with an organization called True the Vote. True the Vote used petabytes of data, they geo-fenced locations around drop boxes, ballot drop boxes, in all the swing states, and they set a minimum criteria of like 10 visits to a drop box. So, anybody whose cellphone showed them visiting a drop box more, 10 times or more, they were then identified and tracked. And they looked at all this data, and they found 2,000 mules, or ballot traffickers, who took literally millions of ballots. The estimate is 7% of all ballots in swing states were trafficked. And, you know, that's just unacceptable. They looked at video, when they saw a cellphone of interest go to a drop box, then they requested video. So, now there is definitive proof that there was fraud in the 2020 election. And I don't wanna spoil the movie for anybody if you wanna go see it, but the fraud was definitive. That level of fraud could have changed the result of the election. So, there was even some of the ballot traffickers who were identified in the state of Georgia, for example, that they went from the ballot drop box to Stacey Abrams' office. So, presumably to get paid for their ballots that they dropped off. So, there's, you know, a couple other things. I've been recently getting more involved, and I met a woman this past week who was somebody who found ballots in a farmer's field in the state of Arizona, in Penale County. Thousands of ballots in the corrugated white boxes that the USPS uses. And low and behold, they were 100% for Trump, thousands of ballots missing in a state that was decided by 10,000 votes. So, I guess I would encourage those who are orange man bad people to look at 2,000 Mules, 2000mules.com. You can go to see the movie, or you can buy the DVD, and I would recommend that, so you can actually watch it and take a look, and, you know, and see for yourself what some of us have been complaining about, you know, 'cause no matter who you support and what side you're on, if we don't have a free and fair election in this country, we don't have a country. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saban. Are there any others? Any others care to speak to the board? I see Mr. Ravelas. And for the record, please state generally where you live.
For the record, my name is Roberto Ravelas, not Gilbert Ravelas, as the meeting's erroneously printed for today. Resident of Gold Canyon. Movies and entertainment are precisely that. Therefore, entertainment. Elections are based on truthfulness, transparency, and accountability. You gentlemen are part of the system that certified the election results. It might give somebody a boost to entertain themselves with ideas that ballots were found in fields. Not a single court throughout the United States received factual evidence that is continuing to be spread by purveyors of the big lie. Mr. Chairman, I hope that Penale County will continue to count accurately the votes, as were accurately counted, in every single one of Arizona's counties. This podium is intended to reflect truthfulness. What you just heard, I repeat, are part of the big lie, and regardless of how much applause lines they gather, regardless of whether Sheriff Mark Lamb agrees with the big lie, supporting the big lie, here at this podium, truth will prevail. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ravelas. Are there any others that care to approach the board, speak, other than for fire? Okay, thank you. Okay, we will go on. And item number two is an announcement by Supervisor Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is Mark Walker here? Do not see him. We have a certificate. What I've asked him to do is serve on our open space and trail. One of the biggest things that is helpful to us as board members are these, these volunteer committees that we have, as there's a lot of time and effort put into the different projects that are out there, and open space and trails is one of them. And I appreciate those that have served, the gentleman that served before, that Mark has taken his place. I appreciate everything that Mr. Palmer did, and I'm sure that Mr. Walker will do the same. So, I'll get with him later and present him with that certificate. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Goodman. Number three, discussion approval disapproval of a request by the Penale County Economic and Workforce Development Department for the Board of Supervisors to declare the week of May 9th through the 13th as Economic Development Week in the county. Seems everyone is taking a week.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm jealous of Natasha, though. She's got a big banner for Clerks Week. We don't have any banners.
Oh, okay. Let me just, I'm sorry, just to jump in there. So, yesterday I came to work, or I came in the office, and Supervisor Miller was walking in with a cheesecake.
Yeah.
Baker, by the way. And he was walking in and said, "Hey, you want some cheesecake?" And they, they're in there, and they got the big signs up for, this is National...
Clerks Week.
Clerks Week, yes, National Professional Clerks Week. And so Supervisor Miller brought in a cheesecake for the crew, and they were having cheesecake yesterday afternoon. They put us all to shame, you know, so...
In fairness, they shared. So, yes, they did share, so. So, thank you Supervisor, Chairman and Supervisors. Next week is Economic Development Week, and we have a proclamation for your approval. Says, "Whereas economic development promotes the well-being and quality of life in our communities by assisting in creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that enhance wealth, stimulate additional economic activity, and provide a stable tax base; and whereas economic development stimulates entrepreneurialism, in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is a hallmark of the American economy; and whereas economic development is conducted in a wide variety of settings, including local, state, and the federal government, chambers of commerce, universities, and other institutions, and has components of both rural and urban development, as well as public-private partnerships; and whereas economic development helps to bring significant business investment, develops vibrant communities, and improves overall quality of life by having jobs located here in Penale County, enhancing economic well-being and reducing commute times. Now therefore, we, the Penale County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim the week of May 9th through May 13th as Economic Development Week, and remind individuals of the importance of this community endeavor, which supports expanded career opportunities and makes life, lives better throughout Penale County. Proclaim this fourth day of May 2022."
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Let's see, does the board have any questions? No, seeing none. I'd ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number three as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Appreciate it. Item number four is County Manager's Report. Mr. Lou.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. As you all know, we've been doing a series on get to know your elected officials. And so, we would like to highlight Supervisor Miller for District 3. We have a profile video on him queued up for, for us this morning. Thank you.
Let's roll.
I'm the Penale County Supervisor for District 3. I've held that position now for eight-plus years. I'm starting my third term. I was born in Mesa, Mesa Southside Hospital, which was about the only hospital up in the near valley. But my roots are actually Tempe. I was raised in Tempe. My dad was a home builder, and so, we would move from subdivision to subdivision. So, I consider Tempe as my hometown. Graduated from high school there, and that's where my roots are. For some people that might know who Wallace and Ladmo are, it was a great kids' show. I lived across the street from Ladmo for a period of time. And his son and I, he was my first best friend. We were like five years old when we met, and we probably were like little devils, running around Tempe. I must've been a quirky little kid in the fact that, when I was 12 years old in 1964, I sat and watched the Democrat National Convention and the Republican National Convention from start to finish at 12-years-old. And the rest of the kids were outside playing, and I'm inside watching this stuff on, on black and white TV. Fascinated me, though, in, in politics and politicians, the founding fathers, the history of America, the, I always loved it, I studied it. I think that, I think this is the greatest country in the world. I don't think there's a place in the world that you could live, that you'd have the liberties that you have here. And it's always fascinated me, to see how this country developed. My dad had taught me the carpentry trade at a very young age. I knew how to sheet a roof, I knew how to finish concrete, before I went to high school. So, and, and he used to say, "I don't know if I can send you to college, but I'll teach you how to make a living. I could put on a set of mailbags and go make a paycheck." In some circles, I'm still considered a newcomer. Came here 50 years ago to Penale County. When I came down here, the phone book was maybe this thick. I think there was about 9,000 people that lived in what was considered Casa Grande proper. You only had to dial five numbers to make a phone call. A phone call to Florence was long distance. But I fit right in. I, I tell ya, I, I felt so at home in, in Penale County, because Casa Grande accepted everybody. I mean, there was only two things that, that people really cared about when you came to town, because you were a newcomer, you stood out, you were a newcomer. But it was your work ethic and your work. And if you were good on both of those, you were, you were brought into the fold. I met my wife, she was going to court reporting school, dated for a little over a year, and ended up getting married. She's only lived in two houses in Penale County, and they're only two blocks apart. So, she, she didn't venture very far from, from home. We have three children, two daughters and a son. Amy, my oldest, has three girls. My middle daughter has a son. And then Robert has a boy and a girl. So, I have six grandchildren. They all live in Casa Grande, they all left Casa Grande, and they all moved back to Casa Grande, which I still am trying to figure that out. I don't know. But we're, again, I think that, that's great, because I do get to see my grandchildren on a pretty regular basis. And, and so they're not so far that I have to buy a plane ticket to go see them. And it's easy enough to say, "I'll see you, I gotta go home." Having raised a family, people would say, "You need to run for city council." "You know everything, Steve." And I go, "I don't know everything. I know very little. But I think I can help you get through the, the maze of government." A gentleman by the name of Tom Ramsdale, we were talking, and I said, "I'm thinking about running for city council." He goes, "You should do that, Steve." I go, "What?" And I said, "Why do you say that?" He says, "I just think you'd be a good city councilman." He says, "Come over on Saturday, and we'll sit down and, and talk about it." And I said, "Okay." And we went over and poured ourselves a cup of coffee, and, and he's, and he's got a yellow notepad and a pencil, and he's ready to go. And he says, "Why do you wanna be city councilman?" I said, "I don't know." He threw the pencil down and said, "You go back and figure out why you wanna be a city councilman, and then come back and talk to me." So, I, I did. I was just kinda like, "Well, why would I wanna be a city councilman?" Then I came back, and I told him, I gave him a list of things. It was a platform. And he said, "Okay, let's go." And so I ran, I actually got enough votes at the primary level, I didn't even have to go to the general. So, I, I had beaten an incumbent that had been there for quite a while. You know, it was kinda one of those things where I went, "Oh, no. Now I'm an elected official, how did that happen? You know? Now what do I do?" Having married into a large agricultural family, I understood the concerns of the ag community. And I actually had to go out and get those certificates of a shirt water for subdivisions when I was in the developer, contractor, home building business. So, I understood that process. And when then, when I was on the city council, I ended up aligning myself with a gentleman by the name of Dick Powell, Councilman Powell, who also had, has a passion for water. We came to a lot of the same conclusions of the water. I, I would tell you, Dick Powell and I figured out that there might not be enough water probably about 12, 13-years ago. And we did it on the back of a napkin. So, it's, you know, we were just kinda saying, "Look, I don't know, if you look at this consumption, and you look at the home building rate, you know..." We, we were suspicious of the, of the whole thing, right, years ago. And when the state of Arizona is in a, the worst drought I've ever seen, okay? I'm 69-years-old, so, you know, we're not gonna be out of water tomorrow. I mean, I just think there's a lot of little things that we're gonna have to look at. Farmers are gonna get more efficient all along, even though the Arizona farmers are some of the most efficient farmers in the United States on water use. I mean, the department would tell you that we use less water today than they used in 1955. So, and when I say "we," meaning everybody. But we do have, from 1970, we had 2 million people in Arizona. Today, we have about 7 million people. So, things have shifted, things have changed, to a more residential life than an agricultural life. Has it been a concern, sure, but you know, it's, it's hard for people to understand when the water's still coming out of their town, that there could be a water problem. In 2012, I stepped down to run for the county supervisor. Again, I prevailed in the very first election, and I've loved every minute of this job. I, I may be, that may mean I'm sick and demented. I don't know for sure. But I, I do like helping people with getting through the maze of government, because it can be difficult at times. What excites me about Penale County is the growth. It is my desire to bring more industry into this county. A workforce migrates to Phoenix, and heavily out of the Santan area, and heavily out of the Maricopa area. And I wanna change those, I wanna change that pattern. Matter of fact, I would love to see more people come into our area to work. I never sweat the small stuff. I try to just really look at the big picture. And I think we've done a good job here in Penale County with the previous board and this current board. I'm anxious to really have a couple of years under our belts with these guys. I like their approach, I like their thought process. We're just gonna try and make this that county that everybody wants to live and work in. And that's difficult, but I think we're making headway on that.
Very nice. That was a nice job.
Start that again, Tosh, I didn't hear the volume.
We didn't, the volume enough, but it'll be posted on the, on the press release when it comes out, so you'll be able to watch it there if you couldn't hear it today. Great video.
Anything else from County Manager?
That's it. Thank you.
That's it? Boy, you did a great job putting that video together. I know Kevin's here someplace. Kevin, you did a great job. Thank you. All right. Item number five, consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Are there any items that the board, or county manager, or the public wishes to call, or pull at this time? Item F, Mr. Lou, all right. Are there any other items that anyone wishes to pull?
Item D.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Item D as in David.
D as in David. Supervisor Kavanaugh. Are there any others?
Chairman, if I can pull item A.
You may. We have A, D, and F at this time. All right. Can I get, can I get a motion to approve then items, I'm sorry, there's an... I'm, I'm sorry, I did call, I didn't see your hand, Mr., I'm sorry, I was looking down, Mr. Ravelas. Please, what item would you care, would you come to the standard?
Consent items M and consent item P, as in Paul.
M and P, yes. Thank you, Mr. Ravelas. Are there any other items anyone wishes to pull? Seeing none. May I get a motion, please, to, for items, let's see. A through U, minus items A, F, D as in David, M, and P as in Paul.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent items A through U, minus A, D, F, M, and P.
All right, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. We will start with item A. Ms. Kennedy.
Yes, Chairman, thank you. For item A, I'll pull that item due to the minutes. We need to correct the spelling of Mr. Roberto's name under call to the public on page two.
All right, thank you. So...
So, the motion would be to approve as presented with that correction.
Thank you. So, can I get it? There you go, okay. And we get a motion for item A as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item A as corrected by the clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion A passes, or motion passes for item A. Thank you. And we go to item D. Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this, I believe, is the item where supervisors are allocated a given amount of funds each year to, to support some nonprofits. And so, I, it doesn't say, I wanna clarify with the county manager, is that what this one is? The funds allocated from the supervisor grant?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, that's correct.
Okay. And if the fire chief is here, can you just explain what this money will be used for? Mr. Larry Vincent, or no?
Chairman, Supervisors, are we talking about the money from January, or the proposed funding?
Today, there's a item D discussion, I believe the amount is $9,500.
Yes. There were additional funds that were, we were informed of, that were made aware for us to continue the gracious grant that you folks gave us in January. We provided a list to Tonia Martinez of the encompassing list of items that we've purchased, along with some photographs, and a quite lengthy discussion on what it's done to help improve our response, irrespective of some current high-profile issues that are gonna be addressed a little later. The funding that we're petitioning for you folks to consider for approval is a continuation of what we did in January, which is to buy more boots, gloves, helmets, hats, some additional wildland fire hose. We were contacted by DFFM, the Assistant State Manager for Department of Forestry and Fire Management, to help us expand. We've been focusing on structure fires at the moment. Obviously, that's everybody's primary concerns. But with fire season in full bore, we're looking to expand our wildland capabilities for brush fires, roadside fires, cigarettes, car accidents, that type thing. So, this money was, we're proposing that it be used to help increase our wildland fire capability.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
Chairman?
Excuse me, Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, just on clarity, so, these are funds that have been left over from fiscal year 21, 22, are not the funds for 22, 23. Okay. Just wanna make sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All right. May I get a motion for item D, please?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve item D as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Item D passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Item F, Mr. Lou.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are very excited and proud to have a project coming to Penale County, Solve Chemicals. And our Economic Development Director, James Smith, is here to present, and we have company representatives that would like to make some remarks.
Chairman and Supervisors, today we have representatives of Solve, as well as Ann Peterson, who's with Atlas Insight. She's been the site selector on this project, so I'll invite Ann to... So, I'll invite Ann to come up and offer some comments and then welcome our company.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi. As James said, I'm Ann Peterson. I'm with a company called Atlas Insight. We're based out of Monmouth County, New Jersey. I'm so pleased to be here with this project this morning, up until today, which was only known as under a code name, but is Solve Corporation, Inc. So, very pleased to represent this project, which could potentially mean up to 30 net new jobs with average wages of around $80,000 per year. The development in total is expected to be around $60 million for the facility when it's all said and done. Solve is a leading global producer and supplier of hydrogen peroxide solutions. I am not an engineer, I'm not a chemical scientist, so I'm going to leave any questions regarding the process to the company representative who is here today, is Yad Haddad, who is the Vice President of North American Operations for the company. But suffice to say that this is a very important and critical piece of the process for the semiconductor industry, which, as we all know, is just exploding right now, continues to grow particularly in this region of the state. And so, very excited to bring this critical piece of the supply chain process to that industry, potentially to Penal County. We're here today to ask for your support for a potential training grant for this project. The company's processes are very advanced, include a lot of technology, so accordingly, there's a lot of training and upfitting of skills that will need to happen in order to ensure the success of this project. The company has gone through and presented some of its training plans to you all. I believe you received that document in your agenda packet. So, we're just really excited to bring this new technology potentially to the county. I think this represents a really great opportunity for the residents to gain new skills, and again, just a really critical piece of the semiconductor industry. One of the things that we did as we were going through the process, the site selection process for this project, was there were, of course, several competing sites under consideration. One of the company's North American headquarters is in Houston. There is ample room for the company to expand there. It is a tested labor market, which we all know labor is very critical to the success of manufacturing operations today. So, that was really one of the leading shortlisted potential sites for this project. I also think, just in closing, you know, it's, although the company has really projected quite a large training budget for these 30 potential new jobs, this really is a critical piece of the overall financial analysis that we're doing for the project. So, just want to stress that we so much, we very much consider your consideration of this project and this potential grant. And again, it's going to be a very critical piece of the success of this facility. So, thank you so much for your thoughtful consideration of our project. I'm going to turn it over to the company representative.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, supervisors. My name is Ziyad Haddad. I am the head of the chemical business in North America for Solve Chemicals. As Ann has mentioned to you, I think she gave you the overall project information. We are strongly considering an investment in Casa Grande for this hydrogen peroxide material, which is used primarily in the semiconductor industry. That's what the plant is focused on. I think you've also heard about some investments in the area, in the Chandler area, in the Phoenix area, over the coming few years on semiconductor fabs being constructed. And the objective of Solve being the leading company for these types of chemicals globally is to support that industry. And this is a chemical that we've been producing for many, many years, very safely. And it goes into multiple industries, but this specific installation would be to support the semiconductor industry. So, I'll leave it for any questions you may have for me this morning, and happy to answer any, anything on your mind.
Does anyone on the board have a question? Supervisor Miller.
I don't really have a question, and this might be more of a question to Smitty there. Just so everybody knows, there's some parameters set on this as we, that give us benchmarks before these dollars are spent, so that it's, it's just not a flat expenditure that we've set some goals by the company before we respond to them. So, if you might just give an overview of that.
Through the chairman, Supervisor Miller, excellent question. Yes, the agreement will call out the capital investment that they've agreed to make, which is 60 million or so, 30 jobs, and they will have to achieve that $80,000 average wage. In addition, we'll ask them to certify that the amount of their training, which according to what they have submitted, will easily exceed what we are providing as a reimbursement. But they will be obligated to provide more in training than our reimbursement.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And again, I knew the answer, but I wanted to share that with the audience so that they have a better understanding of, you know, really how we set these programs up. So, thank you and welcome to Penal County.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With these, with these jobs, what is the type of training or what kind of people are you going to look for?
It's a very good question. Thank you. So, typically, at the onset of the project, we're planning on having about 30 new jobs at the site. These would be technicians to run the site itself, the operations, also some laboratory. There'll be laboratory personnel to do the quality control on the product before we ship it out to our customers. There'll be supervisors, health, safety, and environment engineers. And that's, generally, that's the makeup of the initial number of employees at the site. And we do have expansion plans in the future should our business continue to grow. We can duplicate that type of plant on-site. We have enough land that we would like to manage as well, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Hearing, oh, I'm sorry, one from the public. Yes, ma'am. Would you please come to the podium and state your name, generally where you live?
Lorraine Bethke. I live out off of Pedlar Place in the Florence area. My question is, who are you going to be hiring for these positions? Are you going to be recruiting from Penal County, or are you going to be bringing the men from, say, Houston?
Through the chairman, that's another excellent question. So, in all of our training reimbursement agreements, we have built in an incentive for companies to hire Penal County residents. So, in all cases, we have provided twice the reimbursement amount when Penal County residents are hired versus a non-Penal County resident is hired. So, you know, in this case, they will get twice as much of a reimbursement per employee for hiring Penal County employees versus hiring somebody from outside the county.
Does that answer your questions, ma'am?
Pretty much, except that...
Oh, what?
How big is the incentive? I mean, is it going to be enough to matter?
If everyone could not hear that, is incentive big enough? Is it enough to matter?
Yeah. So, for those members of the county and for the board who may not be as familiar with the site selection process, site selection deals with a lot of things. We look at, obviously, labor analytics to understand whether or not a company will be successful in finding the skills or potential workforce that can, you know, fit the facility's need. And one of the other things that we do is a total financial analysis. And so, we take into account what the total operating costs, including any potential incentives that may or may not be awarded, into that financial analysis, and we compare it to the competing locations. So, obviously, this represents a large investment for the county. However, we do take into account this potential incentive, and so, yes, it does make a difference. It goes into the overall analysis. And, you know, I don't, although this represents a small percentage of the overall project, anything having to do with labor and strengthening the available workforce within a region really makes a difference in a project.
Thank you. Mr. McCain, you had a question?
Welcome to Penal County. My name is Bear McCain. One thing I want for this company to explain, because after what happened in Johnson Ranch, that hazardous waste is something that will really be considered. I don't want the public to feel afraid because we do have hazardous waste. I would like to have somebody explain that. That's nothing to be afraid of.
Thank you. Thank you for your question. Hydrogen peroxide is a product, it's H2O2. It's what you have in your medicine cabinet at a 3% level in the brown bottle that most of you, I think, are familiar with. This is a higher concentration of that specifically to clean chips when fabricators like Intel or TSMC or Samsung make them. So, the material itself is quite inert. I mean, it does have, like any chemical, you have to handle it, you know, correctly. We've been producing this material for decades and without any safety incidents, and we're happy to share more detailed information if anyone would require. And I just wanted to also address the question from the lady behind me. Our intent is to hire locally. I do not plan on bringing people from Houston and sending them over here to take jobs. I think the idea is when we invest in an area, the intent is to go local and to support the community as well. The last comment I'd like to make, just briefly, is that we run other sites across the country. We have about 35 plants. And, you know, community matters very, very much to Solve. That's one of our key pillars. And so, we would welcome, once the facility's up and running, members of the community, if they want to come in, if the fire department, or the police, or any of you would like to take a visit, just to put eyes on what's over there. We'd be happy to show you and give you a tour around and get questions as well once everything's up and running. So, we want to be transparent. We want to be here because we believe in the community, we believe in this area, and we believe in the people of the county. So, thank you.
We're out of bounds, okay. Okay, thank you. All right. I got it. Okay. Are there any other? Okay, just as a reference, we're kind of out of bounds, out of the agenda item here, so we have to keep it just to this agenda item.
Okay, yeah, yes, absolutely. So, my question is just, well, Pete Saban, Unincorporated Morana, my question is to the schedule. When are you thinking to have, like, ground broken and then have the facility up and running?
Great question. Typically, construction in a project like this takes between 18 to 24 months. So, once we get everything green-lighted, it's about a two-year time process.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think we're, I think we're okay. I'm going to call it there. So, I'm sorry, item three, I'm going to ask for a motion, please, if there's no more questions from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve item...
We're all the way to three.
Three, as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Wait, wait.
It's actually F.
It's actually, yes, it's item F. We're under consent agenda item F.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, you know. Okay, detail. Okay, sorry about that. Can I get a...
Mr. Chairman.
Suck that one back in.
I'll correct that motion. I would make a motion that we approve item F as presented.
There we go.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item F. Yes. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Item F passes. Thank you. No, I'm sorry, I looked down and I saw item F, and then I saw Mr. Smith's name on another item, so. All right. We are now to item M, and I believe that is Mr. Ravelis.
A rhetorical question, actually, Mr. Chairman, to be precise. Item M is in the category of funding that we've seen the board consider during the recent meetings. And it's interesting that it adds today $9.8 million, both items M and P, to what was approved previously of $34.2 million, without giving the public an opportunity to know how our elected representatives in Congress actually voted on these funds. I think it's important for the public to know how our elected representatives are voting on these items that are clearly of critical importance and needed by our county. So, my question is, on item M, how did Arizona's representative in Congress vote on this funding?
I couldn't tell you offhand. I'm sure you know and will be telling us.
I prefer not to do the homework for the board's staff, Mr. Chairman, but I think it's important for the public to know these facts because it comes out of our taxpayers' pockets.
Okay.
So, no answer then to that question?
No answer, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
For the record, it's $7.29 million. Are there any other questions on item M from the board? Item M, can I get, can I get a motion for item M, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item M as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Aye. Or a second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Item M passes. Thank you. Item P, I believe we've had, oh, here we go. Mr. Ravelis?
Roberto Ravelis, resident of Gold Canyon. Again, Mr. Chairman, it's not with any sense of sarcasm or disrespect, but I'm simply a person committed to transparency and truthfulness. And again, I'd like to ask how the member of Congress representing this district voted on this item.
The member representing this district is, I'm going to assume, O'Halloran, and I would assume...
No, sir.
Then I'm sorry, sir. I'm not, then I'm done.
It's Congressman Paul Gozar.
Paul Gozar.
And in answer to your previous questions, to fill in the blank, the Arizona congressman representing us on the previous item M also voted against the funds. But again, for the sake of the public's interest, truthfulness matters in reporting all of these facts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ravelis.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sertie.
So, I want to explain to the public that we are elected to represent the county, and we do what county supervisors do. We don't monitor individual city councils or our Congress. That's up to the public to do, and you put them in office. We had someone go, had called to the public a couple of months ago wanting us to investigate the state legislature about the audit, and that's not in the purview of this board. We do the county's business, and we have plenty on our plate doing that. And we're not going to second-guess everything that our congressmen do. There's an election every two, every two years for that.
Thank you, Mr. Sertie. Any other questions in the board, from the board?
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Mr. Volmer, can you explain just briefly what this grant will do for your office?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Kavanaugh, I appreciate the opportunity. We discovered a number of years ago, and I say "we," collectively, the criminal justice system discovered that there's a gap in our system from the point that somebody's actually convicted and that conviction being reported to ACJus and our DPS, it wasn't getting reported. So, people's fingerprints weren't properly in the system, people's felony convictions, misdemeanor convictions were not being properly reported. If they were found not guilty, that also was not being reported. ACJAC identified this as a issue. They came out to each of the counties. I was still in office at the time, but I know they sat down with our sheriff, they sat down with our courts, they sat down with our office, tried to figure out where the gap is. And essentially, they have this money that's there to fill those sort of gaps. gaps to make sure that everything's getting reported, that we get everything that we need to the sheriff's office so they can get it uploaded. The clerks gets everything that they need. So these funds right here are actually designed, they're called N-ship Grant Funds, and they're to hire temporary workers to come in and do that very specific purpose. That's all they're allowed to do is to essentially clean up our files, old files, new files, and make sure everything's up to date.
So among the trillions in wasted dollars that the government of the United States has created in causing inflation, high gas prices, high food prices, some of this rotten federal money is actually used for a good purpose?
I can speak to this grant. This is a good grant. This is a good use of money. Again, we're not hiring full-time employees. We actually use it to hire temporary employees because there is an end, and this is a limited grant for a very limited purpose. But this, I would say, is a good use of taxpayer dollars to make sure that our criminal justice system is buttoned up and neat.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Miller.
Just a clarification, though. I believe our county is represented by two congressmen, both Gozar and O'Halloran.
Yes.
I believe I'm... Yeah, I thought so. Okay. I just want to make sure.
All right. So seeing no other questions, make it a motion for item P, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item P as presented.
I have a motion in a sec. You can wait till I ask the question. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Motion P passes, or item P passes. Thank you.
Trying to help you move it along.
I got that. All right, let's see. I'm going to now move item 11 up to the fore here. So item 11 is, let me catch my breath, authorizing Penile County Sheriff to enter into an MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, with the South Florence Volunteer Fire Department. And I know that we have quite a few folks here. Mr. Volker, would you like to speak to this first, then I'm going to have a call?
We're going to go into a e-session? I wouldn't do it after Kent speaks.
I was going to have him speak and let the folks speak, and then we'll go to e-session.
Got it. And I can do that.
Okay, just, yeah, I'm just...
I just want to be sure.
Ken Volker, Penile County Attorney. I will just note, as a lighthearted aside, I don't think Chris Keller's ever going to let me sit in that seat again.
I get control of this.
So this is, and I'm going to read it verbatim because I think it's important. So this is allowing the Penile County Sheriff's Office to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the South Florence Volunteer Fire Department. We all know why we're here. This is, you know, an issue that's been about 75 days, 90 days, kind of all told. Regrettably, I think people have been pitted against each other, and I don't think that there's actually opposing sides. I think everybody's actually working for the same goal. The county's been described as cold, bureaucratic, would rather see a lady's house burned down than to do anything, and that's not fair. But on the other hand, the volunteer fire department, who dedicate their lives, volunteer, don't get paid. They put their lives on the line. They do everything they can to help their fellow community members, have been disparagingly referred to as untrained. I've heard them called renegades and criminals and other things, which is patently, again, not fair and inaccurate. In this case, what we have is we have a group of individuals who are trying to make their community better. Our sheriff's department tried to do the right thing and bring them on. It was a handshake agreement. This county has a long history of doing what they think is the right thing with handshake agreements, and it come back and maybe bite us in the butt as we continue to mature and as we continue to hold ourselves accountable. This is one of those matters where there was a handshake agreement, but the proper protocol was not followed. When our office was identified, we said, put the brakes on everything. And let me make this very clear. It is an unequivocal travesty, and I believe Mr. Hetzel's here. He lost his home. My heart goes out to him. I'm sure I speak for everybody in the county when I say the heart... Our hearts go out to him, and we have great sympathy for him. But since that time, we have sat down with the South Florence Volunteer Fire Department. We have figured out what they need to be able to get the 911 calls sent to them. Just so the board knows and so the public knows, one of the biggest issues we have is our sheriff's department does not dispatch fire at all. There are no fire departments that we dispatch. So everybody that's on our dispatch list follows a very clean process. Volunteer fire departments aren't even able to follow that clean process. Let me give you a very short example. So I sat down with the fire chief, Chief Vincent, and I said, he's like, what do you guys want? And I said, at minimum, we need a fingerprint clearance card of your people so we know who's there to make sure that we're not putting people in harm's way. He's like, absolutely. Let's do this. I personally spent almost three hours on the phone with DPS on Friday because they said, sorry, there is not a statutory authority to allow them to have a fingerprint clearance card. They said, but you can call this other group. So I got put on hold, finally called these other people. They're like, oh, no, no, no. We can't give them that fingerprint clearance card. And I said, well, how about this? How about our sheriff's department just does the background check on them? Oh, no. If your sheriff's department does the background check on them, we're going to pull their ability to have access to the criminal justice system, to the criminal history and the fingerprints that I was just talking about moments ago. Instead, we had to call yet another group. And that group said, okay, there's a way, but you have to do this, you have to do this, you have to do this. Look, it was frustrating, and it was complicated for me as an attorney who's used to dealing with the bureaucratic morass of this, you know, the wasted billions of dollars that Supervisor Kavanaugh alluded to earlier. I can only imagine people are doing it on a volunteer basis. So what happened is we wanted them to do this, and we wanted them to get to this level in protection of the community. The problem is, I don't think we appreciated how impossible the task that was set. So what we've done in the meantime is we've sat down. There's an MOU that I would say is 99% done. And I'm just going to touch on it because I think the public needs to know. I mean, look, this is, these are what I would call concessions that the fire department's saying, yeah, well, conceptually, we agree, to do a background check, as we discussed, to have a master list of who's there, to have an internal training program, to have training logs, to have insurance, to have a map, to have marked vehicles. They are going above and beyond what I think anybody would reasonably expect of a volunteer fire department to make sure they meet those. And I'm going to credit our sheriff's department because when I called our sheriff and I said, sheriff, what needs to happen for them to get on? Their response was very simple. Kent, we just need to be sure that if somebody calls 911 and asks for help, we don't put them in more danger than when they called and asked for help. Whatever that is, we trust you. My office thought we had a brilliant plan. We laid down this plan, and we actually ran it through emergency management and Chuck Komet. And I give a shout out to Chuck. Chuck's like Kent. I understand why you're doing this, but this would be hard for a full-employed volunteer fire department to be able to comply with these. And Chuck actually worked with us and said, hey, this is the actual national standard. This is a better way. These are how other people do. So emergency management and Chuck really worked with us, and we've really narrowed things down. And then late Friday, I was able to get something to the chief and his team. I know we were even emailing... I'm sorry, it wasn't late Friday. It was this week, maybe. Nevertheless, even this morning, still 7 o'clock in the morning, we've been emailing. But the end of the day, this is where we're at. There is an MOU that we are asking this board to authorize the sheriff to enter into because an MOU is a contract, and a contract is only valid in government if the board gives the authority to have that contract entered into. I can't enter into a contract on my own. Sheriff can't enter into a contract on behalf of the sheriff's office on his own. That can only happen through this board. So we're here today. We're asking this board to give the sheriff the authority once we, again, very, very minute details. We're talking about, so their vehicles are marked. They're saying, well, how do you want them marked? You know, are we talking a sticker? I mean, that's the little stuff we're doing, just so everybody's on the same page. But the idea is this creates a clear expectation for the government. This gives the South Florence Volunteer Fire Department clear expectations of what we're expecting of them, and provided they do that, they will be able to be back being called for those calls. You know, you heard the chief just say, hey, we're looking at wildland fires. That's what our concerns are. The fact that they're being financially supported is great. Now we've got the legal stuff buttoned up. So this is actually very unfortunate that somebody's house burned down. And I want to give complete, I guess, kudos to this board because this is not something that we ordinarily do. And our statutory mandates take priority in what our office does. But I can tell you, the chair called me and said, get this done. I heard the two supervisors to my left at the board meeting say, I don't care what it takes, get this done. I had Supervisor Goodman call me and say, this needs to get done. This is a public safety issue. I've had conversations with Supervisor Miller. So because this board made it a priority, we're done. We've got it to the point it's there. I spoke with the sheriff again this morning. I think he's even standing back there. So I think, my hope is, later today, we will have all of the i's dotted, all the t's crossed, and potentially, if there were a fire tonight, I think there's a real chance they could be dispatched. And those that are concerned, we have all these safety precautions. We have what we would want to see to make sure that these are appropriate people being called, appropriate people being sent out to these fires. So I can tell you, on behalf of the county, I'm very confident with this. It was an ugly, messy process, as the saying goes. You don't want to see sausage being made, and that was this case. And it's unfortunate that there was disparaging remarks because really, I think, when the chief and I sat down and when all of the agency sat down, we were actually all rowing in the same direction. It was just how to get there. I know I'm kind of all over the place, but I really just wanted to update the boards so the board knows where it's at. And I know this is a very important issue for the public as well. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
I have no questions at the moment. Does anyone else have a question? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How will this MOU differ from the letter of concurrence that was signed? And I think it was in February of 2019.
Chair, Supervisor, it's a great question. One, the letter of concurrence was not authorized by this board, so technically, it was invalid, one. Two, all that did is actually get them on the 911 system so they could have radios where they could hear what's going on. That's not actually what caused the dispatch, for them to get a call when there was a fire. So this is actually so they get the call. After my conversations with Chief Vincent, that is what they really wanted. They said, one, we would like to, you know, be known that we're not a bunch of renegade criminals, that we're actually good, hardworking people. And I have no problem saying they are good, hardworking people that are volunteering their time and doing what they need to keep their community safe. But second, he said, we just want to call. That's all we want. I don't care if I can get on your system. I don't care if we get a fancy radio. Just have somebody call us if there's a fire so we can go help our fellow brother and sister out. And that's what the MOU does, is it gives them access to that phone call.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Miller. I didn't look to my left.
Yeah, that's okay, because I just thought of this question. For clarity, because I think this is what I heard, how many other MOUs do we have with fire districts or volunteer fire departments in Penile County?
For dispatching, we don't. Our sheriff's department does not dispatch. So this was a brand-new issue that we were addressing.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Mr. Volker, if I may, Chairman, is that why the fire department was taken off the 911 service? Because there was no MOU in place?
In part, yes. I can't tell you that was the only reason. Essentially, there were a lot of unknowns that we were unaware of. We had concerns that weren't able to be immediately satisfied, and we erred on the side of caution. We discussed it with the sheriff's office. They were questioning what their authority was. We had an outdated list of all of the recognized fire districts or fire departments. They were not included on there. We didn't know who was there. So it was a totality of the circumstances. That was one issue, but there were other issues. We've subsequently had the opportunity to investigate those issues. We no longer have those issues, which is why we were comfortable proceeding forward and really meeting the sheriff's demand, and that is, hey, you know, there's no liability. The county is better off having them on the list than they are not. So it's a totality.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Supervisor Miller, you're good to have the call and then go to exec?
Yeah, do the call to the public, and then we'll go in. I'll ask to go into e-session.
Okay. At first up, I will call, I'm sorry, Maryless, Mrs. Hetzel.
Can I speak to that before we do the call to the public? Is that out of form?
Out of form.
Oh, okay, sure. Come forward, Mr. Vincent.
It's your call, Chair. I mean, technically, it's a call to the public, so you could allow him to speak under Paul. Call the public to this.
Okay, I'll go ahead.
I just thought it was, the timing was appropriate, that to let you guys know that we did have a lengthy and multiple discussions with Mr. Volker in their office, and they were more than willing to investigate the things that we presented to them that they did not have at their fingertips due to COVID and all these outdated databases, and that the very sentiment that he shared, that they were, with him and the sheriff, that they wanted to work with us and they wanted to make this happen. I think it's important for you guys to know, as a chairman and the board of supervisors, that it was a parallel effort. We thought we had covered all the bases and with their help and your folks' support that we've got this MOU in place. So I just wanted to back that up so it didn't get lost in the translation. That's all I got. Any questions? All right, thank you. Sorry.
Okay, thank you, Chief Vincent. All right, Mrs. Hetzel, would you care to speak?
Good morning. I hope all you gentlemen had a wonderful breakfast, shower, slept in a nice bed, in a nice cool house. We have no place to stay, and I want this addressed. I want our house rebuilt. I want to be monetarily compensated for what was done to us. I want the lives of our pets addressed, and I want all these people that are in Penile County, including the volunteer fire department, I want them to be shown as diamonds, and I want them to be treated as diamonds. These people are who elected you and put you in your offices. It's time you start treating these people with respect, including us. Do you have anything to say to this? Do you have anything to say to me? Do you have any way to say you're sorry, literally, to me? Have any of you said you're sorry to me? Yes, you said you're sorry this morning to my husband and I. But how does that fix things? There have been other people in this county that have these things happen to them, and you've done nothing. It's time you step up. And if you don't step up, you'll be forced to step up. We're suffering, and that's not fair to us. We have a videotape of your officers laughing at the scene. Do you think that's okay? Do you think these people that you're hiring are all right? To force us to sit and watch our house burn down for almost four hours and laugh at it? Are your families safe? What if it had happened to you? What if you'd lost your children, your wife, your husband? Does that make any difference to you? Does it make any difference to you that we're sitting out there trying to make ends meet, not knowing which way to go? I demand an answer. Does any, do any of you have an answer for this? No answer? That shows where your hearts lie. That shows that you don't deserve these offices you're in, and you do not deserve to be reelected. Thank you for being so nice to the volunteer fire department. If they had been there from where they were, our house would have been saved. But because of you, we're destitute, and I demand you fix that. Any answer?
Mrs. Hetzel, I'm sorry, but your time is up, and I am sorry for your loss.
Oh, I'm sure it's up. Thank you.
Chair, if I can jump in very briefly?
Yes, Mr. Volker.
I just, for the board's awareness, this is call to the public. So the rules of call to the public are engaged, meaning that we cannot respond directly to any questions, and instead, the board can only refer to staff to further investigate. So for the board's information, as well as the public's, the board is not able at this time to respond in this particular format.
Thank you, Mr. Volker. Thank you, Mr. Volkmer. Mr. Chair. Supervisor Goodman.
But to follow up with that, when this is all done, and then we have a formal discussion, we can openly, at that point, correct?
That is correct. You just cannot respond directly to a presenter, but at the end, when discussion is open, you can speak to anything that you wish to at that time.
That's our opportunity.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're very clear on that with the public as well. Thank you.
Next, we have, I believe, Ms. Wagner, Eleanor. Good morning.
My name is Eleanor Wagner. I live on Pine Brook Road, up by the rodeo grounds. First of all, I would like to thank every one of you for getting involved in this problem and trying to find a solution. I apologize, I'm not a public speaker, so I have a lot of things written down, I didn't want to forget things. Personally, I just don't understand how anyone can morally allow someone's house to burn down and refuse to do anything to help. When the equipment and services are out there, and this is allowed to happen, it is not only ethically wrong, it should be criminally wrong, too. I don't know how anyone can morally live with themselves after allowing this to happen. Shame on all of you who refuse to aid and give available assistance in this tragedy. Put yourselves in the place of these homeowners, and how would you feel if this happened to you? I've lived in this area of Florence for almost 25 years, and have seen the tremendous growth. Just in our area alone, it has grown so dramatically in the last year or two. In our area, which is south of the Whitlow Rodeo Grounds off of 79, there is a tremendous amount of development. There are numerous homes being built by a developer, and at last count, in just our little area, there are 30-plus new homes. There are several businesses there now, too. One particular property and business owner has 14 visible buildings just on his property. We have a home improvement company that moved across the street from us, and they've erected a huge pole building, but we still don't have fire protection, even though we pay for it on our taxes, but we don't have fire protection. In our area, there are other several other businesses that run huge hauling trucks, or huge trucks, hauling heavy-duty equipment to their facilities constantly. We also have two huge RV parks in our area. To not have fire coverage is very, very wrong. We already pay for our fire assistance on our annual property taxes. Maybe increase that tax a little bit and provide us full coverage, and protect your hard-working, tax-paying citizens. This is not a third-world country, and we do, to not provide fire protection to your citizens is very, very wrong. And finally, it's national, or it's International Fireman's Day, I want to say a thank you to all your firemen out there. I come from a family of volunteer firemen, and I know how hard they work. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner.
Give some direction on that.
Supervisor Goodman.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, in regards to staff, if we could address that, where it is on their tax roll, that there's that, there is a part that says for fire protection, or fire on that, so if we could see some response to that, give us an idea of what that really is for. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have, and I'm sorry, I can't quite, Julie Rowe, is this, thank you.
My name is Julie Rowe, and I live off of Cactus Forest Road on Indigo. And for years, since I was old enough, when my father gave us the property to us, my brother and my sister and me, we've been paying property taxes, and it was that back then, it said fire protection, but it, since we didn't have a fire department, it went to the closest, all our tax money went to the closest fire department. When we paid our property taxes, they were supposed to be, that money was supposed to go to the closest fire department. And over the years, they would have a thing where the Florence Fire Department would come out if, in Cactus Forest, if there was a family member in the house that needed, they couldn't get out, they would come in and fight the fire, which they did a few times. But I was gone for a few years, and when I came back, I've never seen a fire truck come back out to the Cactus Forest, at least not in the area where I live. And they still, now they changed the wording on the, on the thing to fire assistance. So I guess they, they charged one price for the land my house, my mobile home is on, another figure for my mobile home, and I have 25 acres out there near my house, and they charge a higher price on that vacant land. And it's not really big, big amount of money, but it's still, every year, we have to pay property taxes, and we pay for fire protection, or the money goes to the closest fire department, which means we don't get, have any fire protection if they don't come out. So they do need to address that, either, like that lady said before me, either raise our property taxes a little bit to give us fire protection, or don't charge us at all if they're not going to come out. That's just it. One time, there was a brush fire several years ago along the highway, and the prison came out and fought it. The convicts came out and fought the fire on the, along the Highway 79. But I haven't seen any more fires since then, people have been keeping their, but that's, it's not fair. You really, if we're paying for, paying toward it, we ought to have some guarantee that we have somebody come out and help us. Right now, Cactus Forest is, the water company is finally upgrading their water lines. For 60 years, they haven't, but they have been going with just small water lines. Now they're putting in six-inch lines. And they just did our street, and now, and they did along Cactus Forest Road, and now it looks like they're getting ready to chop the pavement off on Cactus Forest Road near Indigo, and put, connect the pipes there. And they said, after they get all the water mains in, then they will send another crew out to hook everybody's meter up and put it out from, out in the countryside up to the, right away on the street. And so it's been going on for months, but it's the last two weeks, it's really, so we will have, I don't know if they're putting, going to put in fire hydrants or not, but there's going to be enough water pressure if there is a fire when they get the water lines in. I know it was one thing, since they put, started putting the water lines in, we do have more pressure, water pressure in our lines where I live.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe, your time is up. If you can conclude quickly, then.
That's it.
Thank you.
But they do need, we should have an opportunity to have more water pressure, which will help fight fires.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Rowe is up next. Rudolpho Rowe? Oh, he had, okay, all right, thank you. Simeon Sparrow.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. Everything that the county attorney said was what I was going to talk about, so anything from me at this point on would be just a moot point, so I decline to speak at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri Halsey.
Good morning, my name is Sheri Halsey. Most of the items that I was going to speak about have already been addressed, but after the fire on Ho-Hokum, and my heart goes out to your family, very, very sad, and I want to encourage all of the organizations involved, legal, to get your act together and communicate, that's what we want. I have talked to people, I live on Cactus Forest Road, and we are amazed that this incident happened on Ho-Hokum Road. This is America, we're, we're allowed to be protected, and so I just think that you're moving in the right direction now. It's a little too little and a little too late, but please work together and know that we're out there, we talk, we vote, and, and please move forward on the communication. Thank you.
I have Perry, and I'm sorry, I'm Rhombos. Did I say that correctly?
Good morning, my name is Perry Rhombos. I live in Penale County, I'm also a local business owner in the town of Florence. I am also a volunteer of the South Florence Volunteer Fire Department, and I just think that the South Florence Volunteer Fire Department should be put on the 911 dispatch as soon as possible. This wouldn't have happened if they weren't taken off, doesn't matter what the protocol was before, we were, we thought we were on there, but this, this is why the family lost their home. So if we could do this as soon as possible, like today, it'd be greatly appreciated by our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have, and I'm sorry, I can't, Kazel Obregon. Are you not here? Okay. Moving right along to David Honeywell.
Yes, my name is David Honeywell, and I live out there in Havillina Estates, on Havillina and Oxford. About the 911 thing, that I can't, I still can't get over that. I just still can't get over how people could just close the doors and just walk away. But that's not why I'm most upset about. I had a fire in 2008, and at the same time, my well stopped going. I had water going, and it trickled out. That's nothing. No help from anybody, except for one neighbor came over a little bit late, come over with this little tractor, and he cleared away some debris away from my property, adjoining my son's house to my house by a little alley. That caught on fire. He brought his tractor back, and he put big wet towels all of them, so he could get in there and move some of the debris away, you know, to move away. He saved my house. He saved my motor home. He saved my vehicles and my shed, my parents' antiques and stuff, and he said, those are saved. Both my sons lost, both their homes, my daughter lost everything she had, including about 30-piece Barbie doll set with the boxes in perfect shape from back in the 50s and 60s. She was so proud of those. I was proud to be able to get them for her. Gone. All of the Boy Scout and Cub Scout stuff, I grew up being raised, my parents were Cub Scout leaders and Boy Scout leaders. We were real proud of that. They got a bad soul, but I don't know where that comes from, but I don't like it. But when the, when the fire was, was there, only vehicle that came up was this, the taxi, I can't remember, the taxi number was 11-300, something like that, the tax one, that's the name of it, for brush fire, they did nothing. We were trying to figure out why that, the apartment was sitting around, this is rural metro, yeah, back to that, rural metro, they got their call 51 minutes after it started, and they didn't get there for another 45 minutes. And I'm going, where'd you guys come from? Who the hell calls you? What are you doing here? You weren't invited to this party, but yet they charged, charged me $8,800 bucks. Judge, I made a judgment on this. I had no idea I had a court date on any type, there was no date for me. They just did it behind my back. And I got a judgment against my property. I'm a single man, I raised my three kids by myself. You know, we moved out here in 95, my son was 10, the other one was 12, my daughter was two. I'm just saying, I've had multiple surgeries in my back, how am I supposed to do things? But I keep on going. It's rough, but where am I going to come up with $8,800 bucks? Only person who deserves it was Bob Kim, my neighbor, excuse me, sorry, Bob Kim didn't do ditherly. But Bill Chatlock was on the corner from me, he's the guy that saved everything I had. If anybody deserves a damn nickel from that thing, it's him, but yet I get charged $8,000 plus. What's the, what's the theory about that? What the hell's going on? I didn't even call him. I found out later, he called him. Well, okay, I accept that part, he called him, somebody, he called somebody. If I knew there was no, no fire department out there, I was busy trying to fight, trying to dig up my shovel, trying to use the dirt to put the fire out, that's a good. I was about 60 feet away from him, I looked up over my 64 Lincoln was burned up, along with the Chevelle, a GTO, I can't get it, 30 something vehicle, they got blown away damaged because of this.
Mr. Honeywell.
And that fire started again the next morning.
Can you conclude, please, because your time is up?
Oh, well, it's been up for a long time. I think a lot of things are, are up.
Thank you. Last, we have Stan Fulton. Mr. Fulton, are you, there you are.
Hi, my name is Stan Fulton, I live on Quartzite off of Ho-Hokum down in the Pisano neighborhood. A lot of what Mr. Volkmer said kind of makes my prepared statement a little moot, but it still sounds like there's a lot of culpability to go around, whether it's a handshake agreement, or a written contract, or a contract signed by God. It was a contract, in my book, and this whole thing has turned into a total cluster what's it. There's no excuse for allowing someone's home to burn down. So at this point, what is there to discuss? I believe the contract that was in effect earlier should be reinstated immediately. It's obvious that we need fire protection where we live, in the Cactus Forest and Pisano And if there's, if, if there are discussions that are necessary, they should take place after we get those services restored. Part of the story going around was the fact that the, the county is afraid of liability. Speaking only for myself, I can't even imagine what that means. I would be more concerned with the liability if the fire department is not called, and another home, or, God forbid, lives are lost. In conclusion, I just want to give a shout-out to all these guys, these folks in these dark-blue t-shirts, the members of the fire department. I'm really proud to be part of their community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fulton. Are there any others who care to speak? Mr. Miller.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Brad Miller, I am a resident of Cactus Forest. I would like to personally thank Kent Volkmer and the members of the Penale County Sheriff's Department. I have worked as a government attorney almost my entire career for various departments, Department of Defense, Homeland, the State Department, various other things. And the fact that he was able to deliver on this MOU and get this problem resolved in one week is exceptional. Now, yes, there are some things that I think the community can assist with, with the Hetzel family, and so that's why I'd like to announce that there is a GoFundMe page for the Hetzel family to rebuild their home. But we should also thank Mr. Volkmer and the county attorney's office, the sheriff's office for the duties that they've done, and the delivery of this particular service to our community that should not go without stating in the public. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any others who care, any others who care to address the board, certainly? Your name and generally where you live, please.
My name's Don Stevenson, I'm a resident of Havillina Estates, which is near Cactus Forest. The house that burned down is about two blocks away from me. Whatever the result of this meeting is, it should be publicized. The residents that live in these areas need to know where their fire protection is. When I moved out here, I contacted the Florence Fire Department, and they told me I had no fire coverage. I had no idea about the South Florence Fire Department. So this information needs to get out to the citizens, and that's yours, and yours, and yours, and yours, and your responsibility. So I would like to see something come out as a result of this meeting that is announced to the public. Thank you.
Any others who care to address the board?
Something in Salmon Well. Like, it would make no sense. They're gonna have to drive an hour and a half. That's probably not a service area, but they are giving us that predefined service area as well.
Okay. Any other questions?
I would like to say one thing, just so we're clear. What the agenda item is, is actually giving, this board giving the sheriff the authority to enter into the MOU once it's completed. I told you we're 99%. I have every faith that we're gonna get it done, if not today, within, by tomorrow. I'm hoping it's done today. But what we don't want is to have to come back in another week, or another two weeks, and then they're not on the system before it can be formal, be finalized. So we're asking this board to give that authority that as soon as it's finished, that we can sign off and get them back on 911.
Thank you. Supervisor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, that was my question. We're just, we're giving the sheriff the authority to sign this MOU. You're gonna button up the last little loose ends with everybody, and as soon as everybody's in agreement of that, it can be activated.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there's currently this letter of concurrence in place, but it's not, you know, perfect. Why wouldn't this cover us well for a day or two, and we can avoid the risk of no response to a fire?
So the letter of concurrence doesn't actually deal with the 911, the dispatching the call, but that just allows them to listen and have access to our frequencies. So whether that's it, they don't have the equipment. If you remember, this board, I think, actually granted a relatively hefty amount of money to redo our entire radio systems. We used to only have like 75% coverage in the county. Now we're at like 98%. So we're on a digital system. Our, a single handheld radio right now runs about $8,000, $9,000, and that was pre-inflation. So it could be north of $10,000. So my communications with, with the chief was, we don't even really need that, because all that does is allow them to listen. So in theory, they could listen, but that's not what actually allowed us to make that phone call.
Sheriff, I anticipate a comment from the sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, Sheriff Lamb, I have no issues. These are, these are handshake folks behind me, and I have no issue. As close as we are to the MOU and re-instituting it right away, I have full faith that we're gonna get that done today or tomorrow. I don't see any reason why we couldn't just get that going right now. I think everybody understands it, but the attorney may tell me otherwise, but I personally am okay with, like, just getting, ramping this up and getting it ready to go as soon as possible. So if my attorney says that we can do that, we're good. But I just, I think everybody understands the liability issues and where we're at, that we're, we're doing the best we can to help where we can.
Yeah. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none. May I get a, thank you, Mr. Volker. Okay, may I get a motion for item number 11, please?
You know, Mr. Chair, if I could just interject a couple of things, because I know there's been a lot of discussions about us not having any compassion or anything like that. I think this is an opportunity for me to share a personal experience of my own living in Palominas, Arizona, in Cochise County. And it was a Sunday morning, and I was at church, my wife was at home with our three-month-old baby who was sick. And while I was sitting in church with our other three children, some gentleman comes and taps me on the shoulder and handed me a note, and said, "Take a deep breath." And I read it, and it said, "Your house is on fire. You need to get home now." And as I, and if you know the Sierra Vista area and the Palominas area, as I came around the Huachuca Mountains, I could see in the distance my home on fire, the flames up in the air. And as I approached, all I could think of was my wife and my three-month-old baby, and whether or not they were safe. Keep in mind, I had already lost a wife to death about five, six years previous to that. What a horrifying feeling that is, as you come up. But as I came, and I'm flying down the road about 90 miles an hour, thank goodness that our sheriff's department had other things they were working on there in Cochise County. But as I came around that corner, what a comfort it was for me to see my little three-month-old baby in the hands of a neighbor. And then I proceeded to our property, and I saw my wife standing in tears. What a relief that was. That was just a material thing, and thank goodness that my wife was saved. It was the volunteer fire department of Palominas, Arizona. One of the individuals saw the smoke coming from my home. If he had not responded, my wife would not probably have made it, she was sound asleep along with our three-month-old baby. In addition to that, the entire community, approximately 300 people, were at our site that afternoon. Many of the churches left their church early to come and help the Goodman family. Much of our belongings that we had were rescued. Pictures of my wife with our children, something that is, cannot be replaceable, was saved, and those pictures were saved by many of our residents in our community. And so as I listen to this experience, it's heart-wrenching to me. And I do have compassion. I do have that feeling of love. And so I can support this 100% as we move forward. And there's other areas within our county that I think if we put our heads together as a board, I think we can help other communities in our area as well. So with that, thank you, and thank you for allowing me to, to share some humanization about this board, because I've worked with these gentlemen, and they're very compassionate men, and I'm proud to work with them and serve with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. So I've asked for a motion. May I get a motion for item 11, please?
If I could, may I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
I suppose so. Go ahead, Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Appreciate Mr. Goodman sharing that story about his family, and I think he touched on the, the emotion that the family who's experienced this fire feels. This, in this instance, you know, the sheriff's department set out to do the right thing and provide dispatching service, 911, I guess we don't call it dispatch, we're calling it something else, courtesy call to the fire department. And that worked until something happened. And in a previous meeting, let me back up a minute. At some point, 911 service was ended. The courtesy call was ended, and I called the sheriff, and he didn't know that that had taken place. I called the county attorney. He didn't realize it had taken place. This was before the fire, and I said, you know, "We might want to fix this." And unfortunately, there was an intervening fire. So I'm grateful that we've had the opportunity to correct this problem. And I think it's clear that the people of the community still want explanation. And so part of failure analysis is going in back and figuring out what happened, so it doesn't happen again. And I've asked for an item a week or so ago to do that very thing, and perhaps we can do it more informally, and just sit down and go, "Where did the failures occur? How can we prevent this sort of thing from happening?" Yeah, whether, whether it's 911 service or some other thing. So I appreciate the sheriff's willingness to maybe jump right on it. And even though it might be, it might be imperfect in terms of liability, it's the right thing to do. So I appreciate the sheriff's willingness there. So that's my comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Again, I'd ask for a motion for item 11, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve item 11 as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving to item number six. This is, we will see here, recess the Board of Supervisors meeting, the regular meeting, and we will open the Public Health Services District Board of Directors meeting. And we have consent items, and let's see, all items, two items. We have all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by the single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. I'm going to ask that item B be called. So are there any other items? Anyone? Not many choices here. So, okay. So, so can I get a motion for, to approve items A and B, minus B?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve item A.
Well, I was doing, I was doing the long math. Yeah, you can do the short math.
As presented.
Okay, I have a motion for item A. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. All right. Item B is discussion approval, disapproval of amendment number one to an intergovernmental agreement, contract number CTR 057422 for the COVID-19 ELC funding for K-12 school reopening. I have Dr. Spears here to tell us what that is exactly.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board members, Tasha Spears, Pinellas County Public Health. Item number B is simply an extension to a previously approved grant. That grant was approved on December 15th, 2021. And essentially, what ELC stands for is Epidemiology Lab Capacity for the Prevention of Emerging Infectious Diseases. This particular grant was to offer supportive behavioral health services to schools, and it is a reimbursement-only grant, so that if those services are used, we then can fund those services for the schools. So because this grant was quite delayed in its administration by the state and the feds, and then the agreement occurred as late as December, this is simply an extension to allow for those funds to be able to be spent until May of 2023.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions about this grant? Supervisor Kavanaugh, do you have a question?
Thank you. So, so has the work already been performed, and the county has already fronted that money? Or no work with respect to this portion of the money has been done?
Thank you, Chairman. Supervisor Kavanaugh, at the current time, some funds have been expended exactly $5,825. $5,100 of those dollars have gone to the supportive behavioral health services requested by some schools. So once the IGA was fully executed in December, then, you know, we were able to fund some of those services.
And, and I didn't see, I couldn't open it. How much is this portion?
This exact grant is $1,872,078.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Supervisor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That would be a cap. Is that correct? I mean, that's what we, we could reimburse ourselves up to that amount at some point.
Yes, Chairman, Supervisor Miller, that's correct.
That's how I understood it. Thank you.
Thanks.
And at this point, we've just expended $5,800, and so, of a million, something. Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion for item B, please?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we would disapprove item B.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Failing to hear a second, motion fails. Do I have a motion for item B, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item B as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Hearing one. Motion, it's four to one, I believe. Did you not?
Correct.
Oh, you're, is it?
A nay.
So, okay, so clarification. Two nays, is that what I'm hearing? Or you're an aye?
I was an aye.
You're an aye. Okay, so four to one. Thank you. Okay, motion passes four to one. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could ask the boards' indulgents, my apologies, I did not have this on the agenda. However, May 6th through the 12th is National Nurse Week, culminating on May 12th, which is Florence Knight and Gail's birthday. And so I would just like the community as well to know that we certainly celebrate our public health nurses, as well as our nursing colleagues throughout the county. We certainly celebrate them every day. However, this week also acknowledges all of their concern and caring for our patients and our community. So thank you for that, and happy Clerk of the Board Week as well. Thank you for your help. So.
And go have some cheesecake, by the way. So, thank you very much, Dr. Spears. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
That's my wife's birthday.
Okay. Let's see. We will now close the Public Health Services District Board of Directors meeting, and we will reconvene the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting. And we will, somewhere I have law, there we go, and we will go to item number seven. Discussion approval, disapproval of a donation to the Genesis Project of 10 metal shelving units for a total of a whole dollar. Ms. Patel?
Thank you, Chairman, Supervisors, Heather Patel with Finance. This item does require a unanimous vote from the, the board. And simply put, the Genesis Project has a resource center up in the Apache Junction area. They are in need of some shelving units, and I so happened to be in Building D with Pam Villarreal, and saw that there were shelves that were not being used. So I asked about the possibility of a donation to the Genesis Project. I do know that if they weren't being used, that they could be put up for auction. And if I'm not mistaken, Pam did provide me with a value of about $500. And she is here to answer any questions. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I want to ask, why does this particular one have to be unanimous?
Why does this particular item have to be unanimous? I believe because it is perilously close to a gift. What we're doing is we're giving something for less than fair market value to a nonprofit or to another agency that benefits our community. And when we're getting less than fair market value, there needs to be unanimity amongst the board.
Okay. Thank you. Any other question that you semi answered is how do we find situations like this? So in this situation, it just happened that you were working there, you saw that this was an unneeded item, and that someone else could use it, and?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman, Supervisor Sertie. Yeah, I was over in Building D looking for some furniture for our offices in Finance, and I saw all the shelving, and I said, "What are, what is happening with this?" And Pam did indicate that it would have to go to auction, because it wasn't going to be used. And so I did know that Genesis needed some shelving, and so I try, that's what I try and do, connect people to resources. That's my job.
And you said it has a value of $500, but if it goes to auction, it could go for $10, or $5, or whoever happens to be standing there at the time.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah, used government equipment does not go high in auctions.
Just try getting rid of a piano. So, okay. So you can't give them away. So, okay. So anyway, so we have item number seven here. So do I have a motion for item number seven?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number seven as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Ms. Patel. Appreciate your time.
Yeah.
All right. Item number eight. Public hearing, discussion approval, disapproval to submit the Fiscal Year 2022 Annual Action Plan application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for the use of the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership, and Emergency Solutions Grant Programs, estimated $2.58 million. And I'm gonna guess, without looking up, that Ms. Patel is still standing there.
I am. Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. I am going to apologize, because this can be a little bit lengthy of a discussion, and there is a resulting public hearing at the end, but I'll try and get through this as quickly as possible. Just some background again, we do receive funds directly from HUD for the three programs just mentioned, the Community Development Block Grant, the Home, and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. Every year, we are required to do a public process to identify projects, create an action plan, and submit it to HUD for approval. Right now, unfortunately, HUD has not officially released the exact dollar amount that we will be receiving. The amounts on the screen are estimates based on what we received last year. You will note that in the agenda item, it is to, along with our action plan, we are required to sign the SF 424 form, which is a financial form for federal grants. That item is not in the packet for signature, because we do not have the official dollar amounts. However, the motion at the end would be to give the chairman the permission to sign that, whatever those numbers may be, once they come out. So really, briefly, we held four public meetings throughout the county with our participating jurisdictions, and we did have a public hearing back in March before this board. And then today is the final meeting for hopefully approval. For the CDBG program, we're estimating about 1.8, and that is intended to benefit primarily low-income people, populations, communities, neighborhoods, whatever. We can also address areas, slum, slum and blight, or redevelopment areas. This is just a list of some of the projects that we can do. And real quickly, these are some of our past projects. We became eligible in 2019, so these are the projects that we have been doing over the past few years. We do have four communities that participate in our program, so they too have a allocation that they put towards projects. Now, for the fiscal year '22, these funds, what we are proposing is that, based on whatever that dollar amount is that comes out from HUD, is that we can ask up to the maximum of 20%. We generally don't go anywhere near that, to set aside for administrative costs. And then we have a project in Randolph, and this is to do some sidewalks, curb and gutter, and this would include some designing and engineering. And then we have a senior center project in San Manuel. So this would cover the county's portion of the funding. Because we do not know the full amount that we are going to receive, there's a little asterisk there on the Randolph project. That is going to be our place where we fluctuate. So the San Manuel Senior Center, this is the amount that we would like to allocate to them. Any fluctuation would become in Randolph. If this goes below, the amount listed there is the estimate at this point to do the project. If the amount goes below that, we will be able to capture some program income from a project that ended 10 years ago called the NSP 3 program. There is program income in there, and we can transfer that over to this project, so we will still be able to do the Randolph project in total. And then our four participating communities, as I mentioned, they all get an opportunity to submit for projects. Eloy, Florence, and Mammoth are under what we call a cooperative agreement, and so they submit an application, and then we are, we provide them funding for the project. Maricopa is slightly different. They are under a joint agreement. So essentially, they could become an entitlement community on their own, which would receive funding directly from HUD. They unfortunately did not have the capacity to do a program for what they would receive. So under the joint agreement, we still serve as their administrative partner, but the amount of money that they would get directly from HUD must be put into Maricopa. We can't spend it anywhere else. Whereas, for example, if Eloy did not submit a project, that's okay, the money would go to another area. But that's not the case with Maricopa. So you'll notice that it does say on there that they are going to be able to get their maximum award based on what HUD says that they should receive. These are just some of the other projects that were brought up during our public meeting process. And then now on to our Home program. So we are estimating about 620 for that. That is specifically to do affordable housing projects, whether that is the development of, or the, the maintaining of. So that would fall under our owner occupied housing rehab program, or maintaining affordable housing. What we are required to do under there is we have to take that amount, and we have to set aside 15% for a community housing development organization. It's a very specific eligibility for an organization. It's, it's to do housing development. We only have one of those in our county at this time, and that would be Chicanos Por la Causa. Then we have to provide 25% match towards our funding. And this, we would get through our partners. When we fund a project, they bring the match to it, to the, to the program. So back in 2019, we were not eligible for Home, but we did become eligible in '20, and as well as '21, and then now '22. But throughout '20 and '21, we were not only dealing, of course, with COVID, but we were wanting to put out RFP process to engage potential developers to come in and, and build affordable housing projects for us. So we did complete that process, and on March 7th, I believe, yes, March 7th was the deadline, but no, yes.
May I, would it be okay to interject a question?
Supervisor Kavanaugh, go ahead.
Can we go back to that former slide?
Yes.
So under the Home program, we're talking about past projects, and you know, there's one project my mind is on in Randolph. So is this when we talk about the 2020 or 2021 expenditures and rehabilitation? None of this was spent on that particular Randolph project, is that correct?
Okay. Thank you, Chairman and Supervisor Kavanaugh. That project is still underway. We had some difficulties in that project, but it does fall under our owner occupied housing rehab program. So this up here just shows how we allocated the funds to a program specifically, and then within that, homeowners are eligible to apply for assistance. And so we're still working on that project.
With the price of housing, labor, it's hard to get these done, correct?
That has been our issue. Absolutely. So for our fiscal year '22, and I'm also gonna throw in '20 and '21, because like I said, we sort of lumped all of them together in the same RFP process. But for our '22 funds, we are gonna set aside the administrative dollars that we are allowed to, to maintain. We also are gonna set aside the, the CHODO set-aside. I am not recommending owner occupied housing rehab for the '22 year, because we did it under '20 and '21, but then put balance, whatever that balance is, into our housing development project. So based on the results of our letters of intent for the March 7th deadline, we received basically three projects. And we evaluated them on their readiness, on their ability to provide match, their eligibility. For example, the CHODO set-aside, we had to fund, we have to fund a CHODO. And we received three projects, something from Habitat for Humanity, and two projects from Chicanos Por la Causa. So it would be our recommendation that under the '20 and '21, is that we put the money towards a project in Casa Grande for Chicanos Por la Causa. In '22, it would also be that same project, as well as a Habitat for Humanity project. So the project in Chicanos Por la Causa, in the Casa Grande one, is to build rental units, 176 units. So our funding would go towards that project. And then the Habitat for Humanity project is to build two single-family homes for sale. I indicate up here FY '23, when we did the request for proposal, we did our whole consolidated plan period. And that is a five-year period that we have to do with HUD, and then every year, we do the annual plan. So we just wanted to do the whole RFP for the remainder of the consolidated plan. This will come back, the '23, will come back to you next year. This is just a fore-mention of what This is just a fore-mention of what our intentions, what we would like to do with those funds. All until the four years, that is a $1.5 million investment, and again, we would want to see or would see 176 rental units and eight single-family homes for sale. That is the anticipation of these four years. Under our Emergency Solutions Grant Program, this program is specific to serving people who are experiencing homelessness. We became eligible for this in '21, that was our first year, and we put all of that money towards a rapid rehousing program, which basically means if you are homeless, we will put you in an apartment of some sort and work with you to maintain long-term sustainability of living in that home. We could also do something along the lines of homelessness prevention, which is helping people pay their rent so that they do not become homeless. That program, I wouldn't recommend at this time because we have a current program with DES where we are doing that very thing. And then finally, we can do shelter and emergency assistance. So this would be putting money into shelter facilities or emergency housing. In this case, our only option would be hotel stays. So someone who was out on the street, we would put them in that emergency shelter of a hotel for a short period of time, work with them, and then get their situation changed. We are required to provide full match, so it's about $160,000 that we receive, we are required to match that with an equal amount. In '21, I mentioned the Rapid Rehousing is the project that we did, and that is through our housing authority. They are the ones that are doing the program. For the fiscal year '22, we are recommending putting everything towards emergency shelter, and specifically, two projects. We also did a letter of intent for nonprofits to come to us and submit a proposal. We received two of them that were eligible under this program, also based on their capacity and if they were able to provide the match. So the two programs or projects, one is Higher Heights, and that would be to do the emergency shelter or the hotel stays. And the other would be HOHP, which would provide some renovation assistance at their veterans' shelter over on McCartney. And again, they would be helping with the match for the program. We are required to have certain things available to our residents, technical assistance, making sure that our meetings are accessible, that we have a grievance policy and a layout of what our citizen plan is and how we engage the residents. Our timeline at this point is that if this is approved today, it is required to be submitted to HUD by May 15. And then we would look to execute agreements with our local government partners, as well as our nonprofit partners, once HUD has given us the approval to do so. And that would hopefully be around July. And then these projects would be completed by June of next year. I do have in the audience several representatives from the organizations that we are proposing to fund at this time. We do have someone from the San Manuel Senior Center, we do have someone from Higher Heights, HOHP, and Chicanos Por la Causa. So if you had any questions for me or for them, be happy to answer them, and then we're just supposed to have a public hearing.
Are there any questions from the board? Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Heather, just real quick, a couple of things. So Maricopa's become their own, they'll be receiving funds directly going forward? Did I hear that early in the presentation? And it seemed like a small amount, but is that just because it's the first year? That's one question, so if you want to answer that first.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman and Supervisor Miller. They technically are eligible to become an entitlement.
Okay.
But because of their population and the other mathematical genius that HUD is, their total amount would be somewhere between 250 and 280, which means that they would not have the capacity to do the program themselves. So that's why their agreement is slightly different with us, is they say, okay, we want to ensure that we get all of our money, so we're going to do this joint agreement, we get all of our money, but you guys, we'll give you the administrative dollars, you guys still include us in your con plan, in your action plan, in your public meetings. So we're doing all the administrative stuff for them, they just get to reap the benefits of all of their money.
Okay. Well, thank you. And then to the number you had for rentals assistance, which was like 174, I guess apartments, or my real question is, are we looking at these subdivisions that are all rentals? And is that someplace where those dollars will be spent? Because they're building complete subdivisions under the auspice that they're all rentals inside those subdivisions, and are those going to be some of the facilities we're looking at to place families?
Okay, I think I am unclear on the portion of that which you're speaking. I'm going to go back to our home projects. Are we talking about the Chicanos Por la Causa project that's a rental?
Anticipated benefits, 176 rental units.
So they can certainly speak on their project, but in Casa Grande, there is a whole area where they're going to do a bunch of separate, like there's a unit, I think, that has like four, and there's one that has 10. So it's a little conglomerate of units in an area, all new construction, and it would be available to rent for low-income residents. I can, like I said, I can pull them up, and they can speak to it if you'd like.
Okay. Well, if there's other questions by the board, they can address that one.
No, I, go ahead, go ahead, if you'd like to have them speak.
Okay. Let you know what's going on.
For the record, my name is Evelyn Guerrero. I'm the Real Estate Development Director for Chicanos Por la Causa.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Well, yeah, good afternoon.
Just for a few minutes, my few minutes. I think that I would, I could address the questions, but I wasn't really clear what the question was, Mr. Chairman.
Well, my question, I guess, is that there's, there are a number of projects within my district that are rental-only, it's almost like a subdivision with, and are those some of the projects that you're going to be participating in?
So the, we're looking at several, number of five parcels in total, and each parcel is a little smaller or a little larger, and each parcel will have a number of units that we'll be able to build new construction rental apartments. So it's not a subdivision per se, it's more, it's in the downtown-ish area of Casa Grande.
Okay, so you haven't started these projects?
Not yet.
Not yet? That's what these funds would be used for?
Exactly.
Okay, that's, okay.
So these are like?
That's all I need to know for now, and thank you.
So these are like quad, like quadplexes and?
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of activity, so I didn't know if yours were under construction or were, but anyway.
We're getting ready, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, hopefully, hopefully we can, you can be successful with this.
We are very excited to be working in Casa Grande.
We need some, we need housing, so.
Thank you for what you do. Are there any other questions from the board? I see, I.
Not for this presenter, but perhaps from the San Manuel Library.
San Manuel Community Center. Sure, let's hear from the San Manuel Community Center since we're here.
Senior Center.
Senior Center, sorry about that.
Chairman.
Hello, my name is Dorothy Van Dealen, and I am the president of the local San Manuel Senior Citizens. And welcome, Chairman and members of the board. I have been the president since 2014, and took a little break because I got married, and he died, and I came back. They said I worked him to death, but I really didn't. I work hard, and we really need this grant for our senior center. We are in a small community, San Manuel, and our building is pretty nice. I work on it really hard to keep it updated, but we have no parking facilities. The ladies, and I have about 25 that come regularly to play cards, to, we do a lot of crocheting, quilt making, things like that, to give to people that are needy, business, not businesses, but like the Veterans Association, to the Steel Hospital in Tucson that they need infant little hats and octopuses that they like to hold, premature babies need to hold something that feels like the cord, and we have made hundreds of those. So we're very active. And our parking lot is grass and weeds and mud when it rains. And unfortunately, I am the only person that cleans that. So I work hard to keep that building clean and keep my seniors safe. So the things that we have asked for are some good electricity, some lights, because we have bad lights, and we would like some LED lights so that we can really see inside of our building. And parking lot, and insulation would be really nice, and some decent windows. We only need four, and we would really appreciate having this grant granted to us, and it would make our center safe. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. And could we hear from HOHP as well?
Yes, Chairman, I did want to point out is that, in addition, the parking lot is, to make it more ADA accessible as well, there's also going to be a ramp for better access into the building. So I did want to point that out.
Thank you.
Can I make just a general comment before she starts?
Supervisor Sertie, yes, please.
On the previous, I think with a lot of grants, if you make specific requests, like you just rattled off about four things that you might do with it, I think if you highlight that, it would make grants a little more, said, well, just give us a grant, then we'll decide what to do with it. I think if you would prioritize that, I think it would help, would it not, Heather?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman, Supervisor Sertie. They did give us a list, and we went through, and we identified the items we would be able to complete, and then packaged it essentially, and that's the dollar estimate to do those repairs.
Okay, thank you. But anyone else listening, that is a proper way to go for a grant.
I'm short. She's tall. Good afternoon, Kim Vannenberg from HOHP. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you. We are wanting to put in a larger laundry room. Right now, we have a janitor's closet that has two washing machines and two dryers, and when we get to full capacity, we're going to need to have a laundry room so that our veterans can wash and do their laundry, and also an upgrade for our utility, our electrical, as part of the request for funding that we did. So we're getting ready to ramp up. We're painted now, we have windows from our Arizona Department of Veterans Services. So if you drive by there, you'll see that it's really starting to look like a home for our veterans, our homeless veterans and at-risk veterans. So we're excited.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller.
Sure, well, thank you, Kim. I just, I wanted to hear some of the specifics about what you wanted to do with your facility, so appreciate you coming up there and.
Yes, we gave her a very long list of things, and I do want to give a shout out to our attorney, Kent Wolkner. He brought somebody from Washington DC through our facility last week as an example of a good program for veterans' court, so I want to say thank you for doing that.
I can't resist, as you gave him a laundry list.
For the laundry room?
The laundry room, the laundry list. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you, Kim.
There's no other, are there other? Yes, there are.
Good afternoon. I'm Tiana Khan from Higher Heights Human Services. We're a behavioral health outpatient clinic, but we also have a nonprofit sector where we provide shelter to the members of our organization. Right now, our target population is the Native American population. It's been very problematic in Casa Grande, Eloy, and various locations, we've seen people in Sacagawea as well. So we just wanted to be able to provide emergency shelter to get them off the streets and work in partnership with other organizations to make sure that they get permanent housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we hit everybody? All right, thank you. So at this time, I would, I would open the public hearing. And are you, you're a public?
Yes, Kent Wolkner, I live in Casa Grande, and I am not here on behalf of the county attorney, but I am here supporting this item. We have a number of issues in our community, and what I've seen other, happen in other circumstances is we give a whole lot of little to a bunch of different people, and it amounts to absolutely nothing. I really appreciate this plan. I know there are a lot of other people that would love stuff, but instead, they've really concentrated and figured we could get the best kind of bang for our buck. I will tell you, you know, Kim was talking about HOHP, but the senior center, all these different things are things that we need to, and I commend the team as a member of the public, as a taxpaying citizen, as somebody that has my kids in this community, and I chose to live in this community. I appreciate what this board's doing, I appreciate that we take the time to understand what's going on, I appreciate Supervisor Sertie saying, what are you really using this money for? Because we are doing things to make our community safer and a better place. And just as a member of the public, I want to thank you, I want to thank Heather and her team, and all of the groups that are here today, because they do make us the best community in the state of Arizona to live and raise a family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolkner. Are there other members of the public to which to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I would ask for motion. For item number eight, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item eight as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. Item number nine, discussion approval, disapproval of the internal audit report related to Phase One of the Business Impact Analysis. And I see lots of people, Matt Busby, Eric Groan.
Yes, hi, Chairman, Supervisors. Mr. Busby was not, is not able to be with us today, but he is the new chair of the Audit Committee, which is why he is listed there. Here with the internal audit report for Phase One of the Business Impact Analysis, this has already been approved by the Audit Committee, but it does require your approval. And so with me here is Louis Crumb. Louis Crumb is one of my teammates in internal audit at Protivity, and he is going to give a brief summary of the project, of the report.
Good afternoon, Louis Crumb, as Eric stated, thank you for allowing us to speak today. In December of 2021, we finished up the initial executive phase of the Business Continuity or the Business Impact Analysis project. It initially stemmed from a series of several observations that came out of internal audit that a BIA or a Business Impact Analysis needs to be performed. A Business Impact Analysis falls under the Business Continuity umbrella. It's really about building the requirements for recovery if there's an interruption, whether that be tech, technology, or environment, or even pandemic-related. It is kind of that initial step to build that out for the county. So that's what we agreed to do. We agreed to go through with an executive business impact analysis, with the, an executive business impact analysis, we were really focusing on, you know, what are the critical functions within the organization? And so as part of the process, we interviewed stakeholders from each of the departments, 33 departments in whole, to understand, you know, what are your functions, what makes you tick? We built out with critical stakeholder, or with stakeholders within the organization kind of an impact criteria, right? So like, if, if your function was to be down for seven to 10 days, what would that impact be? What would the impact be to maintaining operations, funding, reputation, safety, a number of other factors kind of fell into this criteria? And as part of the interviews, we understood, you know, each of the functions within the organization, and asked a number of questions to determine what is that criticality, the tiering, we called it. As a result of the project, we determined, we built out an inventory of 33 overall, like I mentioned, overall departments, and then there was 294 functions within those 33 departments. Overall, the results were that we determined 111 were tier ones, the most critical within the organization, 81 were tier two, and 103 fall with. 81 were tier two, and 103 fall within that tier three. And why is it important to kind of build out this tiering? I mean, with any organization, you want to focus, put your funds, your priority into some of your most critical functions within the organization. So we established this tiering that'll allow the, the, the county to move forward and be very focused on those tier one functions as we continue to build out the business impact analysis. So the initial executive phase was to prioritize those tiers. And then going forward, that's where we'll have additional conversations focused in that, the tier one areas to help, you know, understand, you know, what are the, what are the critical technology that makes up a particular function? Are they reliant upon other functions within the organization? Are there critical third parties that are out there? By collecting this information, it'll allow a, a function to build out their business recovery plans. Next, we can move on to the next slide here. So as mentioned, we finished phase one of the project. The recommendation is that phase two, and I kind of spoke to that a little bit. And as that, as part of phase two, that's where we, the focus should be on these, these tier ones. And, and, you know, ultimately with an objective of, of building out the plans for the organization. The idea is to get through all of the tier ones, and then on some sort of cadence determined by the organization, you'd, you'd move down the list into the tier twos, the tier threes. And it, it really isn't a one-time effort. This should be an ongoing thing as, as what the, as part of what the county does. But, you know, we're, we're just helping building, helping the county build this, and this is the initial steps. Thank you.
All right, are there any questions from the board? Seeing none. Can I get a motion for item number nine, please?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve item number nine as presented.
All right, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. Item number 10 is a discussion approval, disapproval of the internal audit activities and audit plan. Eric Groan, you're up.
Yes, thank you. We made it to the end. You'll see on the next slide just our general internal audit update. We have a couple of things that require approval. I did want you to know that there were no relevant silent whistle claims that have been received this calendar year. You already approved in the consent items, two very, very minor modifications to the Audit Committee Charter and the bylaws. And then the only thing left there is just a update on our internal audit plan and ask your approval for us to move the business continuity management audit, because it's not done yet, right? Because the BIA is not done yet. And so we'll defer that to next year. And we'll move up BIA review, the, the phase two that Louis was talking about, to this year. So it's really just a find, no new hours, no change to the overall budget, just moving the BIA review phase two to this budgeted year, and then moving the business continuity management plan audit to, to next year.
Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, may I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 10 as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Eleven, let's see. Item 12, discussion of the board members' request for future agenda items. Are there any items that the board wishes to present on a future meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I would just, I would just ask that we have the discussion either in public here. I think it's the best place to figure out how the failure occurred with the nine-in-one system and dispatching and so on, and how to prevent those types of failures and how we can better facilitate communications moving forward on those types of issues.
All right, thank you. And I have, I have an item, I said, you know, given that we've redistricted and we've had new offices come online this last year, I think it'd be a good idea to have an agenda item where the board could discuss whether changes to district staffing requests, budgets, and operational needs should be made so that the public can provide input. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to see us have a, a work session or, along with our compliance. I know we're, we're looking at some of our codes and things of that nature and where we're at on that. And then also address some of the code compliance issues that were, seem to be, we're taking a lot more aggressive approach, whether it's being the neighbors turning somebody in, or whether it's our code compliance, I guys out doing their job. But I'd really like to look and see where we're at on those compliance issues and then, and so on and so forth, and the revamping of our codes.
Okay, any other items? All right, in that case, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.